We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge, and then if I could get the prayer by Commissioner Patton.
My pledge is to supply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Lord and Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening in the humble matter. Ask you to bless us upon us if we enter into this meeting. We pray, Father, you will bless us with the proper attitude and with the knowledge that we need to have, but have the wisdom to make the great decision for the citizens of our community. God guide and direct us now, Father, so you think rest in Christ's name. Amen.
Welcome, everybody, out tonight. First item of business is the approval of minutes.
I'd like motion, we approve of minutes.
Second.
Of motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Move to pay all bills.
Motion is second. Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. Under old business, first item is brownfield targeted site assessment.
I don't know. I don't know what you mean.
Well, we did, we approved that last month.
No, that's fine.
Well, no, that's fine. I just wanted to know if something else had come up or a question had come up that I wasn't aware of.
No, that's fine.
That's already in the process with grad. Next item is reappointing new members of the code enforcement board. Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't, some of them haven't been appointed, reappointed, so we basically just need to reappoint all the ones with the exception of Jared.
We'll do it. I'll be off scratch with it.
Okay. That would be Ray, Garrett, Rhett, Sonia, and Dwight.
Tim.
Oh, yeah, Tim Blair, I was gonna say, I'm missing one.
Eddie Groves. Should be seven.
Okay, then we're in good shape even with Jared. We're in good shape even with Jared resigning. I thought they was gonna leave us a vacancy. Yeah, the seven members would be Ray McLean, Garrett Addington. We won't have to do Rhett and Tim because they were just done in the last few months. Sonia Gary, Dwight Raymond, and Eddie Groves.
I move the point of names, you left that off to the code enforcement board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor with the eye? Post same, motion passes. Under new business, property to Jimmy Beto. AV?
You asked me with what?
Well, Jimmy's approached me, he lives at the end of Phelps Avenue. I talked about where Paul Decker lives and sheltered. The way it ends, and I've got a map somewhere, I'm probably gonna find it, the way it ends, the street goes all the way to the property line, but it's a piece, it's a pie-shaped piece because the streets are on angles back there. He owns on one side of it. That triangle piece came off the original property that Tommy Jackson and Junior Phelps and all of them, having they developed that. The other side is Hewlett property that is not part of the development to begin with. He's asked us to deed him that triangle piece of pie at the end of the street.
Is that a city street?
Yes, it's a. And I know a lot of times on an alley or something, we'll do half to one side and half to the other, but this side, this property, if we did it that way, it would make an offset in Hewlett's because this was not part of any property between them to begin with. It was all part of the original tract that Tommy.
Well, it's not, it's not really. Here's property line.
Do you want this?
If you got a map, oh, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, Hewlett's not in the city limits.
No, Hewlett's not in the city limits.
Are we closing the street? No.
Well, there's no.
Closing a portion of it, right?
This was, the original property line was right back here. Here's the street, and the blacktop ends about right there, but this is Hewlett's property over here, which is not in the city limits and not part of this. When they developed these, these streets didn't come in square, so it comes out to here. This is, that triangle is part of the right of way.
Who originally owned this somewhere?
Glenn Barryman, Junior Phelps, Tommy Jackson.
And that was either deeded or dedicated to the city, including this tract here?
Yeah, and it's only, this, this whole 15-foot wide or 20-foot wide, whatever this is, all the way up to here is the city street. That's just kind of where the blacktop is.
So, but it actually, that area right there?
No, it's just the, that triangle right there.
Is it grassy area Paul, or what?
Yeah.
Does he maintain it already?
Yeah.
It's just dirt, ground?
And the thing of it is, the only way that street could ever extend out, well, there's two things going against us. If Hewlett gave property to extend it out, number one. Number two, when he comes in there by the lift, substation for KU, it's a pretty good drop. It'd be hard to get a road, extend the road to Raines Avenue, wouldn't it Larry? It'd be almost impossible.
Do you want to say to gift it to me, or is he gonna pay for it?
Well, he's offered to pay for it. I told him a lot of times on stuff like this, it'd be up to his mission, but he would be expected to do that.
Who owns this?
Jimmy Beto.
Oh, he already owns it?
Yeah, he owns it. His house is right here.
This is driveway, I'm sure there's a driveway going in. This is driveway here?
Yeah.
So, his land, this is, this is, this is his boundary here?
Yes. Well, I don't know who owns this one, but I know that's a boundary. He may own that too, I'm not sure.
Who'd never developed that? What?
Unless you got Hewlett to go along, maybe you can't go any further anywhere.
But they'd never develop that back there?
Be keeping it up in perpetuation, let him have it. But, no, we can't do nothing with it.
You can't do anything with what you got, for sure.
Well, those are terms. But he wants something to leave, what's on his feet?
Okay, let me tell you what we need. I haven't seen it, but I'm, I don't think, yeah, that's North 17, 14, 20 West, right? Read that right?
Yeah.
We got that call from here to here. We don't have the call from here to here, and we don't have the call from here to here. So, my suggestion would be that if he will provide us with the calls for the other two sides, we'll do it.
Well, wait till we get that before making.
Well, yeah, we can do that. I just wanted to bring it up. Do y'all see what we're talking about?
Don't fall down, 'cause I slid.
That's the right of way, the property lines are right through here, and this is the right of way to the street, and it's right there, and then it just angles. Yeah. For this street to go straight through, you have to string a lot of feet, and then, like I say, it's too steep to get it connected to Raines Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, next item is VC3 internet service, spectrum or AT&amp;T?
Yeah, they say that our internet's not quick enough or fast enough, they want us to upgrade. I think that they had sent prices from, was it Spectrum?
A10.
Okay, they, we've got prices from AT&amp;T, but we have not checked prices from Spectrum. Do we, y'all have a preference on which you would rather stay with? I think Amy was concerned staying with AT&amp;T because our phone system runs through AT&amp;T, but it's going up substantial, like three or four times what we pay now.
Well, we actually have a residential service right now.
Yes, yes. This is our own dedicated line.
I don't know how we've gotten by with that.
I'm not sure how the AT&amp;T service is here on internet. I have Spectrum residential at home. It's a whole lot better than AT&amp;T residential.
That's what we hear, but Amy's concerned with our phone systems at our AT&amp;T, is would there be a problem?
We have AT&amp;T, and we never have problems, never.
So, we switched ours from AT&amp;T to Spectrum just because of the, but we stream TV and everything on.
That's what we do, too, yeah.
Have you considered Spectrum telephone?
Well, we just upgraded the phone system last, we gave it here last year, so.
Okay, I just wondered if you're concerned about that for us.
Was VC3 gonna get a price from Spectrum, or was we supposed to get a price from Spectrum?
I think we have to.
Do we want to get a price from Spectrum, or we just want to stay with AT&amp;T?
Well, I'd find out from AT&amp;T what happens if we don't have the internet service.
Well, I don't want to hold VC3 up anymore than.
Yeah, no.
So, we'll get pricing report back next month.
Well, you don't have to wait until next month, we can have a call meeting, we need to.
Probably needs to be.
Yeah. Okay, next item is the KLC liability grant. This is one we do every year, isn't it?
Yes.
It's for safety issues. Okay, we have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. Next item, tap on used city water for Eddie Shepherd.
Yeah, the Joey Southerd house that, I guess our son, was it Sam? They switched from city water and went to county water, and now Sam has given the meter to Eddie Shepherd. And I told Sam that meters are non-transferable from addresses. When you apply for a water meter, you're applying for that address. We don't, we can't let you take it from South Lafayette to Phelps Street. And I told Eddie that I would find out, but as far as I know, we could not do that. So, he asked if we, if he could buy the meter to put it in his name to switch the address, which would be like sitting in the water meter, and that would take more approval.
The house served with water by county now?
Yes, that's the one the county took from us.
But they're using our water meter.
How that's gonna work when we want to put another meter in, how's that gonna work?
Well, we would, we would not offer them a meter.
But are they getting water now?
They're getting water from the county.
The Southerd, Southerd is.
The Southerd.
But the Shepherd's not?
No, the Shepherd has our water.
Okay, that's what threw me.
Shepherd has what?
Shepherd has our water.
Okay.
He has a well or something?
No, he just wanted an extra meter.
An extra meter?
They don't live there, do they?
I don't think so.
Say, Eddie and him live down, okay.
So, it's okay if we sell him the meter at the new cost?
I mean, it'd be no different selling to anybody else with it.
No.
I wouldn't have any problem.
So, I never heard of walking two meters though.
No, I have. Fill the pool up and do landscaping several times and see if it won't pay off.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, will you allow Eddie Shepherd to buy a second meter?
Second.
He is actually buying the meter from Joey, the Joyce Southerd property. We need to make sure, we need to make sure that's in the minutes in case there's something that arose.
Well, wait just a minute.
He's buying a used meter.
If we, if we don't, if we don't put this in the minutes and specify where the meter's coming from, somewhere in the future, they can come back and say, hey, we had purchased a meter for our property and now we don't have it.
But that's going against our, I misunderstood, I thought you'd be just like us setting a new meter for Eddie.
Well, the meter's already set.
I know, but I thought it'd still be.
The address that's tied with that meter, that said meter, is the Joyce Southerd address. We need to make sure it's in the minutes stating there that we no longer have a water meter for Joyce Southerd address.
But to me, they should be basically moved.
They should be getting the meter from the city, not Southerd.
Correct, we just need to make sure that it's in the city minutes.
But when they, they're buying the meter from the city?
That's correct.
And we're not, Southerd's just out?
Southerd is out.
Okay, I want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I thought the way you said that they were, he was buying the meter from Southerd.
Well, he's buying, we're sending in meters, but the meter is actually coming from the property from Southerd.
You're physically moving it.
Correct.
But we don't want to put it in there that he's buying it from Southerd?
No, 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 no.
That's what I thought you said.
I just want to make sure that Southerd no longer has a meter tied with their address. I think I got it.
Okay, you got it how you want it? Larry, I get it.
Oh, boy.
We have a motion is second, is any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. Next item is the first reading of the 2023 tax rate. I think you've got the paper in front of you.
That's compensating rate.
Oh, ask if that's Kevin's, I may have picked it up when I was over there a while ago.
Yes, this is the substitute rate, this is the 4%.
Our current rate's point 3.08. If we take the 4% increase, it'd go to point 3.19. And then RSS value went up about $10 million, counting new.
So, this term, substitute saving compensating rate, right?
3.07 is compensating.
Okay, well, what, it's turned through.
3.19 is the 4% that we're allowed to take.
Now, I wonder if I keep in mind that the moves that we have made the last couple years cost extra money. The 3.07 is going to bring in the same amount that was last year. The 3.19, which is 11, 11 thousands, which would be, what would be 11 cents on 100?
No, penny.
A penny on the 100.
1.1.
If we go with the 4%.
And that'll bring in about an extra $20,000, I think we estimated.
Yeah.
And you have to think, too, the city of Beverden does not have an occupational tax like everybody around us has.
And I'm pretty sure in the whole time I've been here, this is about 13th, 14th?
13 year, yeah.
I think we've only raised it twice.
Yeah, last year, well.
One time before that, and then last year.
Right.
So, it would be one penny. You're calculating something.
Well, I was gonna, hang on just a second.
Give estimate there.
VC3, general cybersecurity, everything we're doing moving forward, it would be costing money, and I'm not trying to talk you into it or whatever.
No, but I'm like.
That would mean if we went with a 4% increase, and this is all I can compare to is my tax bill, we'd go up $25 a year.
I'm not trying to advocate forward or not, I'm just saying the moves we've been making.
That's something we have to think about.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not really hip on taxes to begin with, but then again, we've got to be able to have the money to work with.
Yeah, it would be a shame, and I hate to say that, but it'd be a shame if we quit, if we didn't do this every once in a while and then turn around and add a payroll or a payroll, what is it called?
Occupational tax.
And I don't want to ever have to do that.
That's right.
You know, we've made big bold moves with the police department, we've made bold moves with the fire department, and it's a service. You know, that for the citizens, it's a free service, so, you know, there's always funding issues.
I hate to be outspoken on this, but I, I think that we ought to shoot for the 4% increase. I hate to say it, but with what we're trying to do and get accomplished, it looks like that we're not gonna have a lot of choice.
And it sounds like we're doing a whole lot, we're really not doing.
No, we're not, I mean, it's not.
So, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion?
What thing?
Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. Next item is apply for the state local cyber security grant program. Did you find anything out on that?
Not much, but I think they're pretty well guaranteed. If we'll try for it, then we'll get it. It's not a lot of the places are doing it.
Yeah, I knew that's what they, do we have time?
Yeah.
Because I knew it was a tight one.
How do you think? I think I'll have to get it.
Well, then I make a motion, we apply for the state local cyber security grant.
We have a motion is second, those in, any other discussion? I will say this can tie back in with this VC3 step, can use part of that funding for that, so. Okay, those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes. I've got three items I'd like to bring up, then go down the line. First is amphitheater. We have been appro, we've been talking about for some time. When we first built it, we talked about it, why we're not gonna rent it for a while till we got our feet on the ground. We've got an opportunity right now, and I would like to ask this commission's permission to do it, to rent the facility for a private gathering. We did mainly just to see how it goes before we actually come up and set up a permanent rental program on it. We have talked with different places, convention centers and what have you, to kind of get an idea on what the rent would be. The individual has, once rent is agreed to everything, they will rent the facility. On top of that, they pay to rent our tables, they pay to rent our chairs, they pay to rent our equipment, sound and light equipment, they pay the production people to be there to run the sound and light equipment, they use our catering, and they use our alcohol sales, and they pay for everything extra. They've got a band, live band hired, and they're expecting between 300 and 500 people at this party.
I got one more. I got one more. I got one more thing that they need to cover.
Oh, insurance. Yeah, we had, we told them we have to have a certificate of insurance. I'm, thank you, AV. No, that was, actually, that was the first thing that came up even before.
Yeah, that was my first question.
Yeah.
What about insurance, what we gonna do?
That was the first thing that came out of the discussion, for several reasons, but.
So, it's just a private party?
What were we thinking about being the base charge for renting the?
$3,000 for the facility, and that's to basically get you the use of the stage, the grounds and the restrooms. Concessions are all extra at our prices, the tables and chairs, I think, I'm going from memory, and I think the tables are $2.50 apiece and the chairs are $1 apiece to rent, which is.
Do they have to do setup or do we do it?
They'll do their own. We may help, I'm not gonna say we won't help with them, because we have a show the 23rd, they're having the Miss Ohio County the next weekend, so a lot of it'll already be set up.
They pay for production themselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'd like.
Like I said, the only concern I have is who gets the money, because I know the rental, everything you're talking about down there, that does go to everybody down there, but I was just talking about if we rent the thing, is it the city would get the money, or tourism get the money, or what's the?
To me, it's six, one half dozen the other. What I would like to do right now is get the approvals, just, they'll just have to write one check, and then the tourism and the city can settle up if the city wants the money. I don't care one way or the other. I'm just trying to make it.
Again, I was just concerned because I didn't know how that would work.
It's kind of like when you go to the convention center, when you go to the convention center in Owensboro and rent it, you write one check for everything. You don't write a check to the city because they own it, and a check to this people because they own it. I'm just trying to get the approval.
So, this is just an experimental one?
This is experimental, one time for this October 7th show, to see how it works out. If it goes really smoothly, and, you know, maybe something, we'll put together a permanent package, because we've already talked a little bit about it, like for one thing, the catering, for example, and that has nothing to do with this show, but just down the road, somebody might not want the, like we did the grad dinner. Of course, that was a little different because we hosted, kind of hosted that. But if somebody wanted to have a private event there, they may want something besides pork chops and burgers.
True.
But we would have to work out and have a set cater that they, exclusively that they use, and there's a whole lot more, too, when we get into that, but I wanted to see kind of how this worked to begin with before we went.
And is it October 7th, is that what it is? Because we talked about, I thought that's when you thought it was.
So, would they purchase an insurance certificate for that event?
Don't have to do an event insurance.
And they do have that because I've had, we've had it before, a lot of times, like when, even with AA basketball, we had to have a rider for the insurance for the school.
Yeah.
I don't care to try it for once, just see what it does. I don't have a problem with that. And again, no problem, I don't foresee any problems if Larry doesn't have any problems with it, with the, with the food and the stuff. I mean, that's, I know he's, he's gonna do everything else, right? And his group is gonna do everything?
Well, the production side of it.
Yeah, and, and.
But we get, we get a cut of that.
Well, I mean, you know, again, I'm good with that. I just, I think one time experimenting would be a bad idea. I don't have a problem with that. I'm fine.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Maybe he looks like he's got it.
Oh, is that in the? Yeah, well, actually, I do. A certificate of insurance is one thing, and it'd be satisfactory if it has a whole harmless provision of some type, but regardless what the nature of the claim is, their insurance takes care of it. The city, the city's held harmless, and the Tourism Commission, which is an agency that is, is held harmless for anything that happens, but it sounds to me like they're willing to produce it, so.
That was part of the agreement.
Okay.
Just tell them I thought we want part of the insurance, the whole harmless.
Okay, that's, I know we had to do it.
Because I know we talked about it a little bit, I'm like, we all know if anything were to happen, we're gonna be a name, we're gonna be a party of it all anyway.
It's.
I've had people talk about me, don't you worry about the liability. I'm like, if I was worried about liability, we wouldn't have a fire department, police department, streets or sidewalks.
I thought he was hoping name you would.
So, you know, just, so, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. I'm gonna.
We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have the eye. Post same, motion passes.
And I hope it works, I mean, I do hope it works, I do.
It'd be nice, but, but that way we'd see if it's something that might could work, then we could get some procedures and policies put in place, because we have a lot of people, I've had, or I've had several people call and wanting to use it for singing or fundraiser for this, for that, and I've tried to explain to people, you know, you put a band on that stage, and if you have 100 people show up, it looks like a complete failure.
Yeah, it does.
Because it's such a large venue, and people don't realize what it costs to open it up, and they don't realize what it costs to get the equipment set up, and they're the production people. But this guy has no problem with it, and is ready to go with it, so this, I thought, would be a good opportunity just to see how it works out.
Yeah.
And then put something together, because, you know, there may be other opportunities down the road.
And you mentioned the grad dinner, I would like to have that again. Can you get that again?
Well, it's gonna be next week in Owens, or this week in Owensboro.
Wednesday.
Wednesday at lunch.
What? This Wednesday? I don't remember getting one, if I did, I don't remember.
We send anything out to everybody?
I got something, I don't really, it was in the mail.
It's got a little cloner.
In the mail.
Was it in the mail or in the mail from here?
I didn't realize what that was.
Well, yeah, we'll go with it.
You can probably call over tomorrow and get.
Are y'all going? Are you going?
I'm going.
Are you going? James, you going?
Where's that?
The grad dinner? Over in Owensboro, it's over in Owensboro.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, lunch.
I hadn't talked about it.
At first, I'd heard about it, so I didn't even know it, so I was like, I knew it was about the time we had it.
What time is it?
11:30, I believe.
I'll probably pull that off.
You just need to be sure, call and let them know, then get two more in.
Just, I don't need to get rid of.
And where's that?
McConnell Plaza, down on the river.
Probably get me out of that building, I'm tired.
So, back to the rental, and I probably don't even need to think this far ahead, but how choosy can we be? I know this is a private event, but do we have the grounds there to say, no, we can't allow an event, let's say a nudist group wants to rent it out for a concert?
Larry's all for that.
That's all I could think of that wasn't just really, really bad. That wasn't really, really bad, but, you know, do we, can, do we, can we pick and choose?
Probably not.
They, they want to write a check for it.
I mean, just, we can find, we can check on that, like with.
Well, usually when you rent, you have the right to refuse or accept.
Well, it, it depends on what it is.
And the city, that's a good point. The city's in a different situation.
But if, if, if we're using, if we're using one group to run production, and they have something else going on.
Yeah, there's ways around. Cause see, no one else would be allowed to do the production except them. And they're just busy that weekend.
But, you know, they have to apply to tell us what weekend, and we have to check and see.
And we can check with laws, with convention centers and stuff, but like I say, that'd be something, but I don't know that we could.
Because I'm all for, you know, promoting Beaver Dam, people utilizing, but sometimes be like, hmm, that might not be the best thing.
Yeah, but what, yeah, I don't like this, but what you and I think it's not the best thing.
Exactly.
Somebody else doesn't agree with, thinks it's the best thing, and you're using.
Yeah, and that's, that's maybe where I'm going with that.
But I think that would be rare.
I would be more lenient than my parents would be, let's just say that.
Oh, I understand that.
Experiment, what we do at the one times an experiment.
Yeah, this is see how it works and how smooth it goes or.
If, if you, if it goes well, by example, and you want to do it on a, I won't say regular, but you want to do it on a
Continuing basis.
On a continuing basis, then the commission, I think, needs to put together some type of policy.
Oh, I want the, what I would prefer to do is put the whole booklet together, just like, and I used to do, uh, convention planning, so when you go into a convention center or a hotel, they give you the booklet of all the policies, procedures, and you check off what you want, and you pay for everything, it's all plus, plus, plus. Uh, and that's kind of what I would, if this goes over and is pretty smooth, we would like to spend some time putting it together.
It, it just as a matter of inquiry, the facilities over in Owensboro that have independent, uh,
Management.
Groups that come in, um, are they, uh, city owned and controlled, county owned, controlled, some combination of the two?
I think the city owns the convention center, the sports center, and, but they have a management firm that oversees it, and they take care of.
Well, if, if the city of Owensboro can do it, and I was just thinking about those facilities over, they let all kinds of independent groups access those things. And I, I, I would think if it's safe to let the bar convention come over there, you should be able to allow pretty much anybody to, to use the amphitheater, but, but I think you do need a book and policy.
We do need a policy.
But I just, I just didn't want to go to that time and effort and a little bit of expense, just, and if, if something went like this, and.
And this is a disaster.
To be honest, to find somebody who was so willing to shell out this kind of money right off the bat and do all this, I'm like, this is a good way to try this out, and.
Well, might be, like I said, it's a good gauge for what we could do later on, that's the key.
Would we have them have security there?
Oh, they have to do that, and it's through us.
Okay, he probably said that, and I was, I just.
I don't know if I mentioned security, but everything, everything is through, through us. Okay, next item I have is I would like to put up and appoint Lisa Pinson as a member of the planning and zoning board.
I'll make a motion that we.
Lisa's my neighbor, and she's a good lady.
But she's one of the volunteers, I, I used to, she used to work for me, so I've known her, and went to school with her, so I've known her forever.
Yeah, Lisa, Butcher.
You said Pinson or Vinson?
Pinson.
D I N S O?
She was Lisa, Lisa Kess.
Her husband's retired, aren't he?
Probably know if I saw him, but I don't know.
She was a case senior.
I made the motion to approve Lisa, or appoint her, or whatever it means to say.
A second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have. Post say. And my other one, we've been working off quite some time now, but to appoint Courtney Albin as a member of the Beaver Dam Tourism Commission, to, she would be replacing, uh, well, who's she replaced, I just went blank. Huh? No, we got a guy, it's, we needed a female, oh. Tracy Beatties, Allison, Allison Caller.
Allison Caller. Can I make the motion that we, um, appoint Courtney? I'm glad that you got a hope for her.
Well, we've been working on this for some time.
Yeah, I knew that, you know, she, we, she and I had talked about getting involved.
She lives right up here, doesn't she?
I didn't know it.
Yeah.
I didn't know where she lived.
Did he say?
Did you say?
Did he say?
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have. Post say. Motion passes. James, you have anything?
No, things seem to be going pretty well right now, I will say, uh, this, uh, little thing we had in the park over Labor Day, and, uh, we did very little advertising, we still had a hundred and fifty folks show up on Sunday morning at ten thirty. It's, it worked out pretty good, we had a, called it praise in the park, our, our church and my son's church kind of, kind of put it together just to see how it would go Labor Day weekend. And wound it, we didn't do a lot of advertisement at all, just on Facebook, and had over a hundred and fifty folks show up, and it wasn't too bad. I only had one, I only had one little spot of garment to clean up. And I, I thought we got out lucky, because I used to pastor in inner-city churches where I had to go spray the graffiti and sweep up the broken beer bottles every weekend just to have church, so. Uh, I really, and everybody was really thrilled with the facility, and we had, had a good time, but that's, that's all it got.
Sandy?
I don't think I have anything.
Everything good.
You would come to me. All right, your favorite, favorite thing, pickleball. They want to know if we could change the lights, the wattage, apparently, according to the KU guy that was here back in the spring, they put up the wrong lights, the wattage was wrong. They put up a K three, and we're supposed to get a K four. So they're willing to put the lights up, and it'll go from about a hundred and fourteen a month to a hundred and twenty eight a month. I think I got my number right, one fourteen to one, to one twenty eight a month. And again, I don't know if it's gonna fix their problem, but it beats having to put a whole new set of lights up all over the place, cause they are the most, gosh, they drive me crazy.
Well, I'm gonna say too, I didn't know pickleball has gotten so popular with the young set, too.
There's a middle school team now.
Really?
Yes.
We're gonna be hearing, looking for more courts.
All, all age groups are up there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see what's going on.
The kids are really getting into it.
My wife.
I don't think they have. They keep it where they didn't have, and he said they could do it, and if we, if we go ahead, they'd just do a work order, and they'd put them up, he said it'd take about three hours, four hours to put up, and that's it, it'd be real simple. And they're gonna move a wire, I forgot about that.
What happens if these lights aren't running up?
Then we're in trouble, cause I don't know what else to do, cause I.
Who was over the first set of lights that went up, was that you?
No, they did not put up the right light, that's what I, that's what we found out.
They put the wrong, that's why they're willing to do it for free.
I didn't work that for a little bit. I didn't work that. No. He was over the first set, and they want me to second.
Wait, weren't you down there every step of the way with me? You're pretty much, but they, they want to know, and I, I, I would like to do that, if you all don't mind, to go ahead and change the lights out, and at least get that part of it done.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I, I, I make a motion if you don't care that we do that, yeah.
We have a motion, a second.
Anything to appease that group, I would go get the fire truck and hose them down if they have.
I will say though, to make it, it's a little, there are so many people utilizing it, and of all age groups, that's one of the best things we've done.
Three Saturday nights ago, three Saturday nights ago, four Saturday nights, I don't, several Saturday nights ago, I went down there, on a Saturday night, there were over a hundred high school kids playing down there.
My goodness.
Yeah, I went last Monday, we worked on the lights last week trying to adjust them, and there were sixty, fifty-six down there last Monday playing, when we were down there with the boom truck, and we were working on it, so.
Have you figured out where the additional courts are gonna go?
Oh, yeah, they've already discussed that. But they want those with a roof on, so that they can close them off, and they, they make good sense with garage doors, if they can open up in the summer. I mean, these people are fanatical, I'm not kidding you, they're something else, I love them to death, they're the nice people, they will drive you crazy.
And I guarantee you that if they want it, they'll raise the money to get it if you approve.
They're trying, well, they, if you ever go up there, they have done a lot of the work themselves, they put up, put up tents, they put up awnings, they put up, I've got storage places for their equipment and everything, it's amazing what they've done, but yes, they, they are, and, and again, I said this a couple, three months ago, if anybody wants to take over parks, I am more than happy to swap, I'll take sewer, I don't care, I just, I've done parks long enough, get out of that one. Cemetery is on stable.
Ralph, I'm not coming out.
Okay, we got a motion, a second on the floor, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have. Post say. Motion passes. Larry, you got anything?
Yes, uh, God, finally got a Scotty's today, the blacktopping, they're four to five weeks out, uh, tomorrow we'll start measuring our man hoes and getting them adjusted, uh, I've started a blacktop list, if anybody knows a street that you want to add or look at to put on, please let me know soon. I ordered, we, since they deterred the traffic off Main Street, we have replaced several signposts, I don't have, didn't have any signposts to put the speed limit signs up, they are ordered, bear with me. They say, according to the book, they're six to eight weeks out on getting the signposts, hopefully, it's sooner.
Can we go ahead and take the?
Deecher, it's corner of Broad and Gosia, is that, is that a meter cover that got knocked up that's laying on the ground? Is it all around concrete thing that popped up?
It looks like kind of a.
I think that's where the fire hydrant, isn't it?
No, fire hydrant, it's not fire hydrant, but this looks like, that's out of a meter cover.
But I wonder if it's the valve cover to the fire hydrant. It may be the hydrant's valve cover.
It's laying up on the top of the ground.
And Larry, do we have any risers for like the water, water valves and stuff? Can you put one on the end of Mulberry up by Gosia Road, I would really appreciate it.
I don't know, I'll get with the water commissioner, and we'll discuss it, and we'll get, we're at Mulberry, and where?
Uh, Gosia.
If we get this done, I don't have to take Parks and Recreation to it.
Larry, can we take the no semi sign down there?
Yes, yes, they're, they're in town, they're relocating the water line that runs across Main Street at East Third, uh, hopefully that will get done, they'll be down to one lane traffic tomorrow, hopefully they get it done tomorrow or Wednesday, uh, they will come in and mill, mill, mill everything down, and the process for the final code, uh, will be following that.
So how long are we looking at before they're gonna get it done?
I cannot answer, because I, you'll be able to say.
Yeah, you're.
I talked to Jack Goats with the state, and I asked him if they, what they was gonna do on blacktopping, he said that they are, they think they have the money to where we can do it, they're gonna resurface from sixty-two to sixty-two.
Oh, they are going, they weren't gonna do that to you?
That's not public knowledge yet, that's just what he told me today, that that's what they were doing, that's what they was gonna try to do.
Scott had announced it, they felt like they were gonna get to do that.
And this is a really dumb question, cause I'm positive that they're going to, but where you turn into the side streets, that's gonna be all smoothed out and everything, too.
That's what they have to clean down to get rid.
The.
Well, I was thinking.
Larry, the school board.
Well, they're not, they're gonna brand it too.
Clean the dam.
I don't know if they have.
The schools starting now, they might, might want to know for buses.
Yeah.
They, they won't start until after, um, some of the school traffic, I'll, I'll let Billy know for.
Chris Stafford over, you know, he's a guy, he got one of the buses now.
Yeah, that's who you talked to, Stafford.
But since the following's up, it's afternoon run.
Do you need his cell number? Cause it is, it does affect our afternoon buses, and there's stuff going on, I'll just, I'll send you his cell.
Larry, do you have anything else? I, I know we need to go in closed session, but.
It's all one, three things I have.
Okay. Jill? Mike?
Uh, we're getting really close on our group data, the ones that Academy, uh, start October eighth, I'd like permission to go ahead, and as their varied date, be set through the twenty-fourth, it's about two weeks before time to start, uh, just time to take some rain, load the heat sun, make sure we get all the car ready, everything that they need, and get them kind of used to it, and, uh, I took off that one time before, starting at seventeen dollars, and then after the academy, after ninety days, after the off-car race, they get a fifty cent rate. Great pleasure, and Noah Miller.
Is that seventeen fifty, pretty much, the starting?
Yeah, seventeen, seventeen fifty, after, probably, after.
We need a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and start by any moment, should I say, twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth of September.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have. Post say. Motion passes.
They're two good boys, I like, they did a really good job down there.
Anything? He doesn't have anything either.
Sorry, Chris.
Right.
I'm still seeking status of reservation on the month's property launch.
Is this ready for my signature?
I, I want the commission to make a motion and crew executing. You'll read it out? Yeah, obviously.
I'll make the motion if you sign.
We do that on any deed.
Yeah. Well, in, in certain situations, you're gonna ask to make a, uh, this property that never dated to the city, it's no decade to the city, but the mayor's gonna ask to sign a document, in which whatever we own. Production player, and the commission passed a motion after I'm inside. It's one.
Make a motion, pass, I'm gonna go.
It's the same, it's the same thing with our old, uh, hours.
It's, it's one of the, I don't have, I don't have the authority to sign this without the commission approval.
I'll make a motion if you sign the contract.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, sing if I have. Post say. Motion passes. I don't know.
You signed it, just to know.
I was gonna say, can we get all this?
They have to sign.
Yeah. Would it be something we might could do, get this tomorrow, the next day or something, cause someone get it notarized, my signature notarized?
Yes, um, I'm an other, and I want care.
Yeah, you can't.
I can sign for my mom, but if you come to my mom and take me up, that's another, she thinks a lot. So I have the main part of, do you all have a number?
I've got one.
We got one here.
City Hall, I just don't have one tonight, well, are you? Okay, I didn't think you were, uh, Lisa's a notary, I just don't have one here tonight.
I can my mom down, or I can't do it for you.
Okay, Lisa can notarize both our signatures, I know. Well, I understand that. That's, that's her mom. Yeah. Okay, I'll get this signed tomorrow, where Lisa can notarize my signature, and it'll be here for you whenever you want to.
Just come down and sign the contract.
We can come down at lunch?
Yeah. Yeah, Lisa's gone to lunch. Okay, Lisa's lunch is from eleven thirty to twelve, so, if you can catch her before her lunch.
Thank you.
Make a co, after it's fully executed, make a copy of it to keep with the motion, if you would, you get the original, and you take the original for the clerk's office.
Yeah, I need to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion, we go in closed session.
Make the motion, and we go back into open session. You need that?
James, second there?
Do I need to move, go on open session?
We got a motion, a second. Motion, a second, we're back into open session, I want to say there was no business conducted during the closed session, and we are back in open session, so, does anyone have anything else they'd like to bring before the commission?
I make a motion, we dismiss.
Thank you all very much.